Okay, it's 6:30, I'll call this meeting to order. Karen, can you note roll call for this evening? And I'd ask everyone that's able to please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
............................................................
Just a quick reminder for anybody who's watching us this evening, we are in workshop format, which means we are, this is an informal working session of council, so there will be no official action taken. This is our time to work through items of interest and anything that we talked about tonight that requires official action will come back at a regular meeting. With that, we have open forum as our first item, and there's nobody signed up for open forum. So moving on, compost site. Dave, I believe you're gonna get us started?
Will you? You have a patch man, Karen? Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. With some recent events, I felt that I need to come in and talk to the council and get some direction from council for the future of our compost site. So just to kind of run over the current operations of our site. The site we have now opened in the spring of 2016, there was a lapse of 2015 where we didn't have a compost site. Boo Rule, that contractor, had come in and they were gonna start a private compost site, and that kind of fell through, and we didn't have time to get permitting. Heard a lot of complaints from residents not having a compost site, so it was made top priority to get one back. So in the spring of 2016, we reopened. We operate from early April, usually when the snow melts. It's been as early as April 1st to as late as April 30th. And then we operate always to the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. The site accepts grass, leaves, plants, branches, and then up to full-sized trees, so it takes a whole gamut of things. We hire, the city hires part-time staff to just to open and close the gates and then the monitoring material. They keep track of who comes in, who comes out, they tally all that stuff, so we can kind of keep a good track of what we're taking in. Our current permit through Washington County is just the transfer station, which that means is that we do not make compost there, we don't sell wood chips, we don't make our own wood chips. So on a day like this weekend or this weekend, we were open Saturday and Sunday, and then staff today spent, there's six guys out there hauling leaves back out. So they, people come in, drop it on the ground, we scoop it back up, put in the truck, and then drive it off-site. So that's how we are permitted, so we don't make compost. And then the wood chips, we currently have a contractor that does it at no cost, so to try to save the city money, they come in and then they either sell it to District Energy to burn for fuel, or they use it for their other projects. So to recent events, in 2017, Washington County approached city staff wanting to desire to have a county-wide compost site. And seeing that we had already a compost site running, we got in discussions about the county just taking over our site, where it is right now, but taking over the daily operations, the cost of hauling it out, and staffing it with seasonals or whoever they would choose to monitor the site. After some negotiations, agreement never was made between the county and the city. So Washington County approached City Hugo in the fall of '18, basically with the same desire. Hugo has a compost site as well, presented the same thing that they wanted, a county-wide site. They reached agreement pretty quickly, and now they're pretty much done making improvements to the site, and their plan was to open this week, but now with the rain, it's probably next week that they'll be opening full-time. So for comparison sakes, on the, on the one side is the Forest Lake hours of operation. We have spring hours, summer hours, and fall hours. Spring and fall are open four days a week, summer, two days a week. An opposite of that is Washington County's hours of operation that they're gonna have at that Hugo site, the Washington County-wide site. So, pretty similar. They actually open four days a week year-round, plus they're open every Saturday from 10:00 to 3:00 throughout the whole winter as well. So they have that additional time, and I know one major desire, complaint, or question of a lot of residents are why aren't we gonna open more hours? This would give them more hours that they're open. And then a comparison of what our current site takes and what the Washington County site takes, everything's identical except for the Washington County site will be taking organics. So they will be taking that year-round, and that's typically, or basically why they're gonna stay open year-round is organics, or is a year-round kind of thing. They'll still take trees if they fall down or people trim, they'll take them, but their main purpose for being open in the winter months is to take organics. Location-wise, on the north side is our current site, and then using Google Maps to where the Washington County, the new Washington County site is 4.2 miles, or about five minutes away by car, from where our site is right now and to where the new Washington County site's gonna be. So some challenges. Challenges for myself and city staff for running is the length of time that we're open poses challenges for seasonals. There's a lot of rules that they can only work so many consecutive months in a row, they can only work so many days of a year. So currently, just to kind of go from April, which we opened early this year, till, you know, Thanksgiving, we have three different employees that are kind of here, a day here, a day there, then have to take off a couple months and then come back and work, so it's kind of bouncing that around. And then the realized costs, when we do our budgets, you see the, I think it's $25,000 is what we're budgeted for, for the compost site. And that covers the seasonal wages, the disposal costs when we haul them out, we get charged for the leaves when we haul them out from the contractor, charges us $5 a load to take that in. And then also the fuel for our vehicles for the hauling is what's charged out of that. And then again, the brush pile is for free. As you can see, our pile is huge, and we can't get, the contractor easily get for free, can make money at a lot of other places, so now we've been kind of put to the backburner. So it's, I can anticipate going forward to keep that down, as we're gonna probably have to start paying for that as well. And then the unrealized costs, that doesn't really show up on our budgets, but just the staff time for public works. I can't have it broken down into 2016 and as of last Friday, $900 hours, 877.5 hours, 748, and then so far, almost $550 hours this year, which I use the city's fee schedule for public works employees, it's pretty close to what wages and benefits is for an employee. That's what we're spending annually just on staff to haul, not alone losing those hours for other public works activities, but that cost that's going to the compost that really doesn't show up on the compost line. And also, just to point out, most of our hours are April, May, and then October, November, like the two busiest times public works has. They try to get seasonal change over to finish up doing everything else that we have to do before freeze-up, and then again in the spring to get, you know, the beach house ready and the docks in and all that. It's probably the worst time that you can actually be overloaded with time. So I would say at least three-quarters of that time is spent in those two areas. And then just the wear and tear on equipment. I did a quick calculation, we've hauled 1,024 loads from our compost site to Dressel Contracting, which is out on July, just right in Chisago County, just north of the border. And it's a 20-mile round trip, and that equates about 21,500 miles just on our tandem trucks and our haul trucks that are used to haul that back and forth. So just to break down some advantages and disadvantages of closing down our site and just, you know, directing traffic to the new Washington County site. First off, you'd free up between $20,000 and $35,000 in general fund dollars. You'd gain 750 to 900 hours to do different projects, reducing approximately 6,000 miles a year in city equipment. You'd see an increase in operational days and hours, accepting of organics, and a possibility, opportunity for airport revenue leasing out that site, now that is the compost site that could be used for future leasing. I know there is restrictions on that site, but there is tons of possibilities for people that are looking. I mean, right now, it's, there's a lot of people using just a little small portion of it, and you open up that whole area. The disadvantages that I see are just you have no, you know, you no longer have just a resident-only, a Forest Lake-only site, and it would require additional five minutes of travel for some residents, depending where you're coming from. So just some discussion items for night, for tonight. Just wanna know, I mean, is there, do we feel there's a need for two sites within five miles of each other? Do residents wanna, need or wanna pay for two compost sites? The Washington County, if you look on your garbage bill, or your trash hour bill on garbage, it's the county environmental fee, and the county charge is 34.5% of your bill, and that goes into renting their hazardous waste centers and their compost sites. So Forest Lake residents will be paying for that site at Hugo, and they'll be paying for this one that we have here too. Just again, I mean, can we find a different use for that actual, you know, the annual $20,000 to $35,000 in general fund money? I could give you a big list of things that we could accomplish with, you know, the $750 to $900 of labor. Once again, is there an opportunity for the airport to gain revenues, and what would be the next steps if we decided to close the site? So I'd just like to open up for questions and comments from city council, and be happy to answer your questions.
So I appreciate the opportunity to provide feedback. Do you have a recommendation?
My recommendation would be to close it down, and it's actually, also, we've met with Washington County, and it's actually their recommendation for us to close down.
Yeah, talk to us about that conversation. How'd that conversation go, and what were some of the factors they cited?
Well, they feel they have a site down in Woodbury too, and they don't like to compete with other compost sites. We're not, we're obviously not a private composting site. We're down there, there's people trying to make money off the compost, but, you know, you have two different things within, or two compost sites within five miles with pretty much similar hours, and you're just gonna be fighting it, you know? And Washington County wants to have a good product, and if we stay open, then, if we close, they know they're gonna get all of our residents, which is a pretty good jolt to their site. And talking with them, they'd be more than happy to bring, they have, their marketing has a bunch of flyers that they said we could get at City Hall and to give to our compost attendants, that they can hand out to people coming through, you know, showing the new hours, where the site is, all that. Also, they would, they'd be more, they're willing and want to put up a big banner in front of our current site, just kind of buy our compost dollar sign, just telling people where the new site is, the hours and all that stuff, where to find them. And conversely, I think we'd probably promote it on our own website, saying, you know, on our compost site, saying, you know, it's not, it's a new site, it's still a county site, it's, you know, we're not really shutting our, shutting down, we're just moving areas. So...
Where precisely is it located?
It's on 170th, County Road 4, so if you go down 61 or hit that roundabout, it's maybe a quarter mile on the south-hand side, right there. Hugo's had that compost site there for many years, so it's just, but they've only taken leaves and grass.
Okay.
So they've expanded it now to take, you know, the full gamut of things and a bigger site, so...
So near the roundabout?
Yep.
Okay.
Do we know roughly how many residents use our site? Not how many visits, but how many unique residents, families?
That's a good question. I don't have that number. I can get you the number total, but as you know, there's repeat customers, my tenants know people by their first name, because they come in once, twice, three times every Wednesday, and they come, the Saturday people always come Saturdays and all that. So I think the number's somewhat skewed when you see the full amount, but, I mean, it's, I mean, it gets used quite well. I mean, it's, I think, I didn't get the numbers for this weekend, but last weekend, there was almost 400 people, 400 separate vehicles that came through.
Wow.
So it's, it's widely, I mean, the fall is the biggest, just with the leaves.
That pile of brush you have there right now, we were in there day before yesterday, that's unbelievable. The whole site is just about full.
Yeah, so we were out there today in the rain, and we kind of stacked it on top of each other, and we opened it back up, because Sunday, they were, the leaf pile was banging into the wood pile, so we were running out of room. But, and like I said, that's kind of back to the chipping, as they were gonna come out in July, the chip, that pile up, and then the tornado in Barron County happened. So all the contractors went out there to make money, and then, so we're kind of last in the list, because they will make some money with District Energy, but, you know, it's not, if they can get somebody else to pay more money, it's worth it to them, so...
I think the idea is good for the city of Forest Lake, I'm just afraid that you're gonna catch a bunch of flak by proposing this site. You know, anytime we can save a few bucks and, but not everybody's gonna be happy about it, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I'm just venting out loud, that's all. I think it's a good idea, anytime we can save money. And I think there are better uses for that site also, but just be prepared.
Yeah, I think it would be kind of echoing what Sam just said, just making sure that our messaging around it was pretty clear, because I know people talk about the compost site a lot online and in the different hours and stuff. But for me, as a resident, and we use the compost site, I just think paying for two that are within five miles seems just kind of silly to me, but that's just, that's just me.
Yeah, my concern is the perception. Up until actually you flashed the number on the screen, my perception is that it was much further than five miles or five minutes away. And so I think that if that doesn't get the headline, the perception's going to be, it's now gonna take me half an hour to drive to Hugo, or whatever. And, you know, the question is, is it worth having two within five minutes? And, but people aren't going to perceive it as five minutes, and so certainly an uphill battle to be fought there.
I think, I think it's a better site just for traffic flow as well. I mean, at some point in time, MINDOT's not gonna be very happy, and there's no turn lane going in there, coming either direction, and just going in there, I've heard, you know, the tires squealing and the horns honking that, you know. Fortunately, there's never been an accident there, but, you know, and we've kind of gone off of this as a temporary compost site, and that's how we're permanent as a temporary compost site, until, you know, we find a permanent spot. So I think the more years that you're there too, there's gonna be some requests for, you're gonna need to have a left-hand turn lane, you're gonna need to have a right-hand turn lane, because it's, I mean, it's, people are going 60 miles an hour, and all of a sudden, the person in front of them hammers on the brakes and turns in where, I think this one's a lot safer of an access, you're off the main highway, you're within a quarter mile of the roundabout where people aren't, you know, coming full speed already. It seems like a ways, but, I mean, I've driven it a couple times, and if you've made your drive all the way there already, it's four miles farther right down the highway. It's not, we're gonna wind you and, you know, five miles of back roads and I'll send you out in the middle of nowhere, it's a, pretty much a straight shot.
You actually could argue that it's drive time, especially now with the roundabout through downtown, it's probably shorter distance from there to the Hugo site than it is from there to the old compost site, and so you could relocate many different locations in Forest Lake and have longer than a five-minute drive time.
That's, that's a very good point, and I had thought about that, I never brought that up, that, you know, originally it was up by the North Water Tower, up by Vexby Park, and for a lot of residents, that's, like you said, it's a lot farther drive now for them to go there. That, you know, it's a lot of your rural residents that are using it, and they may be coming from 170th and coming around that way to begin with and looping back. So I mean, you just don't really know exactly where everybody's coming from as well.
Right, or they've come from North Shore Trail, and they've already been on the street, been on for 15 minutes, and another five minutes may not, I, yeah. I think it's one where it's going to be more perception of distance than actual time. What about, I wanna make sure I have the savings correct, can you go back to the, that calculation? So direct costs, the $20,000 to $35,000, those are direct costs for the seasonal employees, the disposal cost, rental fuel, correct?
Yep.
But then the indirect costs are anywhere from, up to year-to-date, almost $31,000 to, in the past, over $50,000? Is that, those are public works employees that charge to the general fund but are working on compost project hours?
And, yeah, and sometimes enterprise ones, because we might, on a, when we have six people hauling, we might have a sewer and water guy in that truck that day too.
Okay.
So it's, it's just a total, that number, that is either a parks person, a streets person, the mechanic, a sewer or a water guy, a stormwater guy, it's whoever can fill those seats in that day, which generally comes up to that dollar a month.
So direct and indirect between 55,000 to 77,000? That simple math works? And then plus, on top of that, the equipment, the depreciation on equipment or use of equipment? Okay.
Yeah. I had to see the importance, I mean, if this is something the city wants to do, I had to see the importance of doing it sooner than later, so we can get to people while they're at the site right now, bring the leaves in, because the majority of people using it right now are the ones that use it year-round. And if you can advertise and give them the flyers and give them a chance, they might, we have, like, we're open, just for example, like, so they're closed on Mondays, Washington County, we're open, but on Wednesdays, we usually have a line of people on 61 waiting for us to open at 11:30. Well, Washington County opens at 11, so you might get some of these people starting to go there and checking it out and getting a few extra loads in that day, or the days are open at 8:00 AM on Saturday or 8:00 AM on Friday. I mean, even this fall, you'll probably get some of these residents going down, they're taking advantage of the extra hours. This year, just getting familiarized with it, and I know, I know we'll probably get some flack, but I think it'd be a lot better to be out in front of it for a month of advertising versus April 1st surprise, we're not opening, hope you find the new site.
What is, do we know what the length of contract Washington County has with that Hugo site? Have they locked in for, is it a year, five years? Do you know?
It's either, do you remember, five years to 24?
Three or five years, I think.
I, 2024 sticks in my mind as what they've locked in for.
Okay. Dave, we've had, so there's a nursery company that's approached us about an interest on having private, you know, a private option in Forest Lake. Can you talk through lessons learned on privatizing that contract in the past? The compost business has not been a lucrative business for us, and I think there's some history there that'd be helpful for council to know. Can you give us the Reader's Digest version?
Yeah, well, I just know the smaller ones, I can talk to Boo Rule, but that's, they've had issues everywhere they've been, and, you know, they've had a Stillwater site that costs Oak Park Heights a million dollars to redo, ours costs $250,000, and we're still not completely done, we still have to get rid of the gravel pile and reestablish some dirt. The smaller ones, even in talking with Washington County, with Dan and Patrick, they do get, they do get these smaller companies wanting to get into it, but even Washington County's kind of leery about it. You know, they're more, more or less looking for Washington County to kind of help them out and subsidize some of it, but, you know, their kind of opinion is, get it running, if it, if it works, and, you know, then we can help subsidize it, but they don't, I don't see, some, it's usually a way to get in to do something else, you know? And what that is, I don't, I can't speak for these other contractors, but usually it's, we'll come in and run your compost site for you, and the next thing, because we wanna sell mulch out of it. Well, I don't think they, some people comprehend how much you're taking in, you know, and what you're gonna do with that. You know, it's, it's a massive amount. I mean, to your point, the tree pile, I mean, a smaller vendor, all of a sudden, you'd see him...
And what would they do with it?
The amount of quantity they have coming in is...
Yeah, tremendous pile there.
Whereas Washington County's, they're contracted with OTI, they're out of the Northern Metro, and they, they're pretty much on-call, they, they'll run the site, plus chip when they need to chip, they, I mean, they have it all dialed, and it's not their first rodeo doing this stuff, so I mean, it's gonna be a well-run compost site, you know, and I wouldn't recommend it if a private contractor is gonna open up, I wouldn't be recommending this either, because you just don't know how it's gonna work out.
And there isn't a, there isn't a capacity, I should ask a question rather than make a statement, is there a capacity with the Washington County site where, up at, you know, if we happen to inundate them either on a weekly limit or annual limit, is there a capacity, or is it an unlimited, kind of, a program is set up with unlimited capacity?
It's unlimited, they, in our readings, they said they would be able, they're set up to handle what we take in. I mean, we've given them numbers, when we spoke the first time with Washington County, we gave them the numbers of what we took in for compost annually, and what we took in for, you know, trees and brush annually. So they, they have a pretty good idea of just what Forest Lake brings in, and they probably have, with Hugo, all they took in was grass and leaves, so they don't know that, that side of it. But the difference with them is, with that contractor, the contractor's gonna come in and clear the brush and clear the leaves and grass as often as they want to, because they're gonna get compensated for it, you know, where we go backwards. You know, if we haul, we're going backwards, or if they haul, you know, well, Washington County would be spending the money, but, you know, that contractor's making the money off it, so... But they're, they basically said that the site is, you know, they plan it to mirror this one, basically, is the same kind of capacity and same setup, so...
Other than, so other than the ability to save some general fund dollars, are there some other site improvements that we can kind of authentically pose it as an upgrade of service, rather than kind of seeing that we're taking away an option that we're providing? I'm just looking for, what does that list of things look like, that we can promote it as a, it's an upgraded service? So there's some hours, right, expanded hours?
I think the biggest thing, which can't quite be accounted for right now, is that $900 of staff time.
Yeah.
I mean, I could, as soon as January hits and the compost site opens, I could start keeping track of everything that we did outside of the normal, what we usually do, and how much faster we get stuff done. You know, I think that's the biggest part of it, is, you know, to put the dock out at Lakeside is, you know, we try to squeeze that in between a couple days when we're hauling compost, well, now you don't have to do that, that could, you know, we can probably be the first dock out as soon as, you know, freeze-up comes out. Just random, random everything, like I said, I could, I could make a list, but I can't tell you that right now, but that's the, for myself, and just, that staff time is, I mean, that's almost, you know, it's a half a year's, you know, person an hour, so what can get done, that's a lot of time. And that, that's the benefit, I see, I mean, the $25,000 is great, and, I mean, there's always a place to put that somewhere else, but just that time, you just, you can't measure that. I mean, today was, today was raining, yeah, and you really couldn't do much else, but this whole, on a normal day, our complete Monday was shot, with our entire street staff was gone, just hauling compost.
Are there questions of council?
Well, I just agree that we have to sell the idea, Lauren, I think that's what you were trying to bring up, right? And when I said they were gonna, you know, the messenger was gonna catch the flak, you know what I mean? And so, I think we just need to sell the idea, I think it's a good idea, I think it's an opportunity for us to save some money, I think it's an opportunity to open up that piece of property for something else that's better. And so, generally speaking, it's a pretty darn good idea, so let's sell with the right So, uh, let's sell it the right way so we don't get you beat up too bad, you know, so.
I'll take the beaten up if I can get that much more time back. If I can, if I have to feel phone calls from concerned residents and I know I got that much more time to work with, with staff, it's.
Sure.
You know, so.
That's all I have.
Is there any, um, is there any capability, so for the resident who's really disgruntled and really absolutely does not want to travel to Hugo, is there options other than the yard waste bins in the Republic contract for, I mean, there's, there's yard waste bins? Was there any other bulk pickup items?
I'm sure that, I'm sure that you could get a special pickup of some kind of Republic is willing, just with yard waste, it's, you know, it's just yard waste, so.
Right.
Well, I suggest if we do this, I agree that it, we really need good communication around this. And I think we have to kind of focus on the advantages of making the switch, you know, being the cost savings, being the expanded hours, being the, um, the kind of the savings to the city, you know, where we don't have the duplicate cost of the county and the city. And the idea that it frees up property, you know, for the city to, good property to put to better use. And I think the organics, you know, piece two, you know, is kind of a good positive point. So, I, my suggestion would be, you know, should we choose to move forward with this? The flyer doesn't just contain the switch and the hours, but it contains those reasons why, you know, we've made the decision that we've made, kind of focusing on those advantages, because we know there is going to be a perception of a ma- major disadvantage, even though it's only five miles.
Right.
So.
I also think, I agree with you about doing it sooner rather than later, just because April first, I mean, we won't get everybody and people will forget over the winter, but I think slowly getting that word out and then just keep, keep with the messaging all, you know, and then maybe February, March, if, March maybe if the snow has stopped, we can put out some real, like, a lot of, you know, emails out to folks and on the website. But I think, I don't know, I just think taking advantage of the folks that are doing it now, spread, will spread, but that's up to.
And Washington County seemed very, very willing to, you know, and they said, well, we'll probably, we'll make a couple hundred copies and have the tenant. Goes, well, if you need two, three hundred, five hundred copies, you know, we'll give you whatever you need. And, you know, I mean, I think they really would like us to be shut down. I mean, and just because it's, the same thing is why I think it's silly to have two that close. I think they see it the same way as, you know, in the grand scheme of things, they wanted it here. I mean, and that's, so, and that's whatever, long story short. But I think the, the site we had was probably the one they wanted and that just fell through. But now they just see it as, why compete, you know? And the, they're, all the residents are already paying for it through the county, so why should everybody pay for two?
Yeah.
Especially since the Hugo one will take everybody, but then the Forest Lake are, you know, a private club or a private resident-only type of deal, so.
So, if you live in Washington County, anybody that lives in Washington County can use that site, is that correct?
And Ramsey County.
And Ramsey County, okay.
So, Washington County residents can use Ramsey County sites and Ramsey County residents can use Washington County sites. So, they, they signed that agreement just very shortly, just short ago, that they kind of have reciprocity with, with both, so.
Do you want to bring back your question list? You had a good list of questions, I just want to make sure that we've kind of addressed all of them. Feels like we've kind of talked through number one, right? Need for two full-service compost sites within five miles of each other. It's really a convenience factor, but a practical application. It's, it's tough to make an argument that there should be two. We kind of talked through around residents. Washington County's opinion on closing Forest Lake site, we talked about that. Talked about the, how we could be using the, the co, those costs, both the direct costs as well as the indirect labor costs. Opportunity for the airport to gain additional revenues. Can remind me on why this is automatically airport revenue? I know it's adjacent to airport land, is that, is that a, is there a contractual arrangement there?
I believe Forest Lake Nursery was purchased because of the fly zones. I think that chunk of land is.
I didn't, I don't know of any contractual, off the top of my head at least, on that, so, income thing.
But that is a foregone conclusion, that it is a?
I don't know if the whole entire site, but I know that.
There's no contractual, so it's the lease revenue that we get for leasing out the Forest Lake Nursery, the commercial side of it, it's always gone towards the airport fund, but there's no contract that states that's where that money goes. But historically, past practice has been, since it was part of the airport, that money has gone back to the airport fund, is, is part of the revenue.
See, that was owned by the airport property at one time, so this is, goes way back.
And I'm not necessarily opposed to that, just want to make sure I understand what the arrangements are. And the, so the opportunity would be on, in an alternative site? So, whatever, however that redevelops next, knowing that it does have some limitations because of the fly zone, that, that would be potential opportunity for revenue. Is there any revenue today that the airport would stop receiving if we made that change?
No, they, they currently get revenue just for the, the building side of it, not for the compost site. I think what Dave's referencing is that if you could potentially expand leased area out, you could charge more on the lease side of it, to get additional revenues for.
And additional revenue for the airport is a need, right? Like, there is a.
Yeah, and we need, which is going to be another subject too, because of the property that, you know, this goes back to the hundred and twenty acres, whatever it is, when that's sold. I mean, there's some things we can need to talk about along the way there too, so, different subject.
Yeah, yeah.
Different subject altogether.
And I think it's a good site, I, I mean, you just have to figure out the right, the right person for it, but I think it's, would be a pretty, you know, appealing site for somebody there. Just some restrictions on the, the building, but I think the side where our compost site is is actually outside of the fly zone, I believe.
So, would we remain, remain open through the rest of this season?
Yep, so we, the, the next steps would be if we, if we decided to, to move the operations to Washington County, would be that we'd stay open through the Wednesday before Thanksgiving like usual, but do a heavy push of marketing to the Washington County and hopefully get people in between there to start checking it out on those off-hours and the extra days that are open. And then, uh, yes, and, you know, in February, March to do some kind of a, a push on, on the website or whatever, or even the utility mailer when it goes out, or their water bills go out in end of March, you know, to push that on the bottom of the utility bill, saying that the.
That makes more sense than anything, really.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, I, I, to your point, I, I know I'll get flack and, you know, everybody will get flack, but I, I think if you give people a month, month and a half of knowing it's coming versus, like I said, surprise, we're not here anymore, that's going to be detrimental. I mean, I don't, it'll be worse. So, I, really, I mean, sooner than later that we can make that decision and get Washington County to give us the literature and get residents knowing that, the better. I mean, it's just every day that goes by is, you know, so this is the heavy season. It just really started picking up now, so, I mean, you'll get a majority of your people in the next two, three weeks, or it's going to be the heaviest.
What, um, what do you need from council official action? I mean, obviously, that's not going to happen tonight, tonight's workshop. Is this just an operating decision that we, as a council, would approve a proposal? And then would approve a?
I don't even think you need an official council action. I think if you give direction to change the operational issue, we can go ahead and start that. If you want an official, I would start the advertising before any official vote, but it seems like, what I've heard, we, we'll make that switch, but if you're more comfortable making a, a, a vote on it at next Monday, we would do that. But we'd like at least some kind of consensus so we can start the ball rolling and get the information ready to go.
So, I guess my question would be to council, do you have additional items that you would like to see before we made a, made a decision? Do you have open questions? Do you want to see anything else? Do you want to sleep on it? Do we want to give council or staff direction tonight? I'm open to feedback.
My, my only concern was if we could sort of get a handle on how many families used it, but I don't think that's possible. We just, I think they checked the driver's license, it's been a couple of years since they've been there and you're done, Washington County zips it, so they, they can probably create that data, but it is what it is.
Yeah, I could give you, I keep, we have track of how many cars, just individual cars come through every year, but like I said, I don't know of that, say, five thousand, how many was the same car coming through? I don't know that amount.
It's a hundred percent accurate count either.
No. No, you're, I mean, your more accurate totals are, well, we get in compost taken every year and, and chipping. It's like fifteen thousand yards of compost and ten thousand yards of chips is what we end up usually going through on average.
Has it been fairly consistent, the amount you're hauling?
Uh, y- yep, compost, yes, the, the trees, that year we had the tornado, like, two years ago. I mean, that was outrageous, like, I mean, you think that, that pile was big now? I mean, that was all the way, all the way up to the building and all the way to the Jersey Bears. And they chipped it once in between there, so. But the compost has been consistent, pretty much flat bar every year.
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good too.
Well, and I guess, I guess for me, the, you know, the pros certainly outweigh the cons. I guess the question to council is, would major pushback by our community change our minds? And if we don't think that it would, then there seems to be no reason to hesitate, you know, moving forward. And that's, that's the question I'm, you know, challenged with at the moment.
Yep.
So, I, I guess for that reason, I'd like to see it come back on another agenda just to get, and not, have an opportunity for additional, you know, community to weigh in. It's certainly a topic that when the compost site is not open, or even when hours change, we do hear. And so, I'd like the opportunity to be able to just, you know, get some initial information out there, really around kind of advanced promotion. If nothing else, we should be helping to promote the new site anyway and, and getting feedback on, and being able to use that before we make an official decision. I'm, I'm a little leery, council member Beistrom's point on, you know, we put it on a workshop agenda, make the decision and boom, it's done. Because it potentially could be, you know, and realistically, we're coming off the heels of a tough trash conversation. And this, you know, could be perceived certainly as, you know, additional, if there's a perception there's been a restriction of service, this might be, you know, adds on to that. So, I'd like there to be opportunity for feedback.
I think one of the things that would be helpful to me is to potentially see a draft communication that we might utilize as we're kind of moving toward this, that would be helpful to me. I don't know if it would be to others, but, you know, again, you know, the, the rationale makes sense. I mean, cost savings, wear and tear in vehicles, mileage, staff time, you know, only another five miles away. You know, it just all makes sense, but I just, I think that would be helpful to me. You know, maybe to see something in draft form that we would be considering distributing at the site.
This goes beyond what we would put on that flyer, but for me, one of the points is going to be that the compost, this service has been an incredibly costly service for the city over time. As you've, you know, with the taking back of, what was it, the private contract and what's happened with this particular site, it's, this has been a very costly, and if there's an opportunity for us to get out of this business, I think especially if we can offer an even better service that is four to five minutes away, that's, there's a great argument to be made, but I do think we need time for it to settle in the community or else it's just going to be perceived as we rip the rug out, so.
Yeah, I think the, the two full-service compost sites within five miles of each other statement is, you know, and they're, they're both impacting our residents tax-wise.
Residents are paying for two.
Yeah, they're, we're literally paying for two, our residents are, or will be, so. So, it all makes sense to me. I probably would prefer to sleep on it, maybe see some communication, but, again, it's just that question. If we think the pushback is going to change our mind, then we really need to think about it. But if not, I think we could be ready to move forward quickly.
Is a, is a week too short to think about it? Our next council meeting is the twenty-eighth and then it moves to November twelfth and then you're two weeks from closing, so.
I could be prepared to make a decision next week.
So, just basically bring this back for a discussion again on the council meeting and. Yep.
Communication plan outline of a flyer. And if Washington County's going to provide a flyer, perhaps we print on the opposite side of, here's the Washington County story and we kind of, here's what's in it for Forest Lake on the other side, kind of have both messages out there.
Yep, I will reach out to Washington County. I know they, he said they had stuff ready, so just, if they have it ready, I'll get it, get it come this way and work on that and then we'll get it out for next Monday.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item this evening, strategic planning update, results and discussion. Patrick, can you start us, we're kicking it over to Bruce.
Yeah, let's introduce Bruce. If you recall, he was here a few weeks back and from Big River Group and to report out on what our strategic plan was and give us some information, an update and hopefully some steps to move forward.
Great, thanks.
Welcome.
Thank you, thanks for having me in, again. I believe each council member has a packet with the results as well as a pyramid, correct? What I'd like to do is spend a couple of minutes walking through the process. We can have some short discussion about how it turned out and what it turned out to be. We need to take a little bit of a deeper look at the pyramid and make sure it's moving the direction you want. You've got a draft in front of you, it's not finalized yet. More importantly, I think we need to talk about the role of the council moving forward. You know, how does a council use a plan? And how does the council continue to get department head input? You know, there are people that are punched in, leading this place day in and day out. We want the council to be able to make sure we're hearing from them as we go forward. If you have the, the cover sheet there, it's sort of a table of contents. Remember that you had an initial session with council and, and key employees. You had two community sessions for input and then there was the final council meeting. So, there's, there's quite a lot of product there. Could we take just a minute and, and hear from the council? Their thoughts about how the process went and how you feel about your participation? This is not a quiz on the entire packet, by the way.
Can you just refresh my memory? Wasn't there a survey that went out as well, or?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And you did not have incredibly robust participation.
Okay.
The, the people that get to the survey initially are the people that are very happy and the people that may never be happy. And the real question is, what are the people, what is, what's the big middle-of-the-bell curve think? And, and those are the people, I think, that showed up for your, your participatory sessions. So, I think you've got a pretty good probe into what people are thinking. If, if you really want to, well, if you're a school district and you want huge participation, change the school colors or the mascot. I don't know what cities do to make that happen, but whatever it is, you haven't done it, because if people were unbelievably unhappy, they'd have swamped the survey. So, I, so we have to find out what they think. But, but a lack of volume does not necessarily mean there's something wrong with a public survey. How did the process feel for you as, as the ultimate leaders of the city, as, as the council members? Did it, did it work for you? Were you happy with your participation?
So, I'll jump in. So, reflecting, reflecting on the process, I was incredibly pleased with the participation that we got in the focus groups.
Good.
I feel like we had a diverse set of opinions. I feel like there was alignment between the two different groups, which was nice to see that, that there's some, there were minor differences, but overall themes. The two groups were aligned and so it was nice to see two independent groups working independently through a process and coming up with close to consensus. I, I feel like, you know, I, I feel like council's work session through taking that initial feedback, I mean, getting to the first round of what's in our, on our packet pages, page three, that next tier, the five independent kind of focus areas, I feel like we're on target. I feel like we could use some additional work at the work plan underneath, but I also feel like that is a good handing off point for staff to come back with what that looks like. And I think there's some opportunity for staff and council to tweak what those details of the work plan look like. But, you know, having, you know, we've been at this since July and to have those five kind of particular pillars of focus. those five kind of particular pillars of focus continue to rise to the top is affirmation that that is the right process. We've also gone through budgeting process, and that's kind of come through our budgeting process. I think it's now kind of the magic between, the handoff between council and staff, and that may take several rounds for us to get comfortable that we've got full alignment of strategic plan and staff work plan. Just my thoughts.
In order to make that happen as cleanly as possible, if I could take you to page seven. Page seven is, is your take after seeing the surveys, after seeing the results from the community sessions and all the prior sessions. You said, look, here's kind of what we think it ought to look like for the vision. Obviously, that's not a vision statement yet, but the items are in there. And these are the, the big items, the five pillars that need to be worked on to make it happen. On pages eight through twelve, you started to rough in and provide some information so city leaders and department heads can then take these and move on. I liken this to going to an architect and saying, you know, we're gonna need an, we're gonna need a blueprint for a house. We'd like two thousand square feet, a split entry and a walkout, four bedrooms, two full baths. By, by giving the architect enough, they can then go back and start to build the plans for you. And pages eight through twelve are not meant to be that blueprint, but you're specking out what you want brought back to you, and you'll have another set of checks and balances as they bring more to you. Could we go to the pyramid?
And before we do that, other feedback from council on kind of the process and what's worked well, where have we maybe not hit, yet hit the mark? This process isn't done till we're, we say it's done, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm interested in your feedback on what, how we've done so far and what else we can do.
The only thing that I would say is, um, I'm, when I saw the pyramid, I was like, wait, there has to be more, so. Where's the timeline? Where's the strategy? So I'm, I'm happy, I figured there was, but, um, I'm glad to hear you talk about that, that that's, that's still yet to be done, and kind of what Mayor Bain was talking about, that handoff to the staff who really truly are the experts in these, in these areas, so I just wanted to say that. And also the facilitator, and I apologize, I cannot remember her name, I thought she did a really nice job of keeping us on track.
Wendy.
Yeah, yep.
Wendy needs work like that, like a vampire needs blood. That's, that's what she loves doing, so.
Yeah, she's very skilled, and I've sat through a lot of strategic planning meetings.
Yeah, it was gratifying to read the evaluations too that came back. You know, people really believe they got heard, that it was a process that worked.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I appreciated that, um, hearing the feedback on the process itself, or their involvement in the processes. They really felt, um, they really felt like they had been heard, and they really were seeing some positive momentum, um, which they felt that they, as citizens, could kind of align with as well. This is what they wanted, you know, wanted to see, uh, moving forward. Um, I would agree with Member Monson, and I know we're, we're probably transitioning that, this direction, but, you know, as I start to look at this pyramid fleshed out, I mean, some of what we're calling strategies really look like tactics to me.
Mm-hmm.
You know, um, and so, um, you know, create downtown working group feels like a tactic to me under a, a broader strategy on revitalizing our downtown, right? And so, um, you know, so I think we do have some work to do here, um, you know, kind of, um, you know, around that kind of strategy, tactics, and then the benchmarks that align with those tactics, which are measures of our progress. And so, um, I, I, it's, it's, we're getting there, um, but I do think we have some work to do here. It's my opinion.
I would concern, I would concur, I'm a little concerned on the, and on the pyramid that if we hire two dedicated staff people, we're gonna have a favorable environment for new and existing businesses and have a great communication plan, and, and I don't think that could be further from the truth. Um, so I'm a little concerned how we fill this in to Councilperson Bystrom's, Bystrom's comments, that it's, I'm more like Patrick, I'm more of a tactical guy. Um, I don't, I don't need a lot of flowers and roses and whatnot on the plan, but how we're gonna get there, probably needs a little bit more than a dedicated staff person there.
Agreed. Given that that is the, um, given that that, so I've gone back and forth, um, on kind of what we should do for next steps.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on one hand, I contemplated redlining, you know, redlining and out, you know, this, this current draft and outlining my thoughts on what, what should be in this next round of feedbacks, you know, and specifically where we've just got the sole item of dedicated staff person. Um, however, you know, I, I think the question is, um, is do we want staff to fill in the blanks and propose, bring back to council, or does council, do we have some specific ideas that isn't reflected in the document that we want to provide staff direction proactively? And, um, so in lieu of redlining and kind of giving you the Mayor Bain perspective on strategy, I just thought, well, let's, let's just bring it back and see what does council want to do? Do we want to workshop these items and bullet that out for staff, or see staff bring it back and, um, which direction is most, does council want to do?
I guess I, I would do better with, um, having staff work on it and have, bring it back, and we have something to react to, so we're not starting from zero, you know, I mean, I know we're not starting from zero, but.
Right.
Just, um, bring back their expert, you know, thoughts and opinions and then, and then discuss it. But that's just my opinion.
Would it, would it make some sense to provide some mechanism for broader feedback prior to them kind of doing? I mean, I don't know if we, you know, we can provide them some email feedback, or, um, or if they've got enough to go on.
We haven't had much.
Patrick, what would be helpful for you? Go ahead.
We just haven't had much luck with the feedback. Really, when you think about a total, uh, from start to finish.
Kathy, I think you're meaning no feedback from council.
Council, direction from council.
To staff, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. What does staff want?
Well, either, I mean, either way, I mean, if you have concerns about the document and the pyramid, the way it exists, before we even start to put something together, I would like to know those, you know, so that if we can incorporate them or understand what your concerns are, we do that, but we'll be happy to go back through this and try to make it more specific and make it more targeted to what, you know, the strategic plan is. And, and I agree with the dedicated staff person, for example, is, it's, it's pretty broad, it's pretty, you know, out in the clouds still. So, um, yeah, I mean, I think we can do both. I think that if you, if any of you have some sincere concerns or suggestions right off the bat, please, you can do that, but if not, we will start working internally, not only with myself and Dan, but the rest of the staff, will take these probably one at a time and go through them and try to, um, to nail down to some kind of a format that you, that you would like.
Yeah.
Mayor, can I run a quick question by you?
Please.
At the, the council. Where would you like to use this? Is this a tool to open conversations with community members and community groups? Is it meant to be a one-way piece of communication that resides on the website so people know? If we could talk about the purpose and, and what you'd like this to do for you as your snapshot of the big bundle, it, it may help format the work, because I, I really think that your vision and, and the green level, you know, with the five pillars, that's pretty good. I think it's the, the tactical area, right? What would you like that to look like? What would you like it to do? Could we talk about that in general, and maybe staff could ask questions, or Patrick can ask questions if they need a little guidance?
Yeah, I'll be happy to, but I think that the purpose of the pyramid is to give that snapshot to give, at least, you know, we know that people don't read every page of every document, that this is the, the thing that the citizens will take out and try to understand what we're doing with the strategic plan. So it's really the summary that needs to be, uh, that's the focus of going to be wherever we go, whether it's the community, whether it's the council, so we need to improve that just so everybody understands it right away.
Yeah, and I, I see it as both. I mean, I see it as a, as a roadmap for us, um, and I see it as a communication tool for us, and I see it as a document our citizens can refer to, to say, this is the council's plan for the next five years, and where are they at in this plan?
Agreed.
So.
Before we talk more about the detail, um, do we all, is there agreement or consensus that in general, the five pillars, we've properly identified the five pillars? I appreciate there's probably the need for some wordsmithing between, and it's not, it's more than just wordsmithing. As Councilmember Bystrom pointed out, the tactics versus a strategy, and so maybe taking downtown working group up to a higher level. But that said, are we, do we at least have the five appropriate menu items identified? Um, or is, I, I think, starting there on, um, have we gelled on five items that make sense, and now we're, we're ready to have staff move forward with the next layer? Or is there still some feedback that council wants to provide on those five items?
I feel like the five items reflect what we talked about in our sessions and with the, um, community sessions, and what's just been rising up in other conversations.
That's, that's my perspective as well. Um, and I think if we have council kind of, at the informal level, is, because we haven't yet formally adopted this, at least kind of give a informal blessing of those five items, then it provides, you know, freedom to move on to the next level of detail, which I think is exactly where we are. Um, but I want to make sure that we're not working on detail if we're gonna then later jump back and, um, kind of have to rework those five items.
Yeah, I guess, I guess when I reflect back on the feedback from each of the sessions, whether they're staff sessions or community sessions, I think in general, this reflects that discussion. Um, I just am, you know, again, if we're looking at a five-year plan, you know, creating a downtown working group happens probably in the first six months potentially of a plan, so I'm looking at, you know, a broader strategy statement around, um, developing that plan for, um, downtown revitalization. Uh, and the, creating the downtown working group would be kind of a tactical piece of that larger, um, you know, that, that broader strategy.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, I think, like I said, in general, um, I think we're, we're on track with that section, but, um.
Okay.
Couple of them I think need a little work.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
I'm, I'm on page on the five of these with some changing, a little bit of changing on the words. The one on the develop, develop financial plan, I, I don't see that, how that ties back to the vision. When you, you look at the other four, and you can find those within the vision, don't get me wrong, I think this is critical to get right in order to get any of the rest of them, but I, I don't know if, I, to me, there's a little disconnect in that one. You know, I, I can see where we talk about parks above, we talk about, you know, multimodal downtown commercial area, you can kind of see all of these, except that, like I say, it's very critical we have that, so I don't know if we have to add a sentence to the vision or, um, but other than that, I'm fine for the five of them.
Is it, um, so, great feedback. Um, like Councilmember Bystrom made the point on the downtown working group, I wonder if rather than remove that or blend it in with the others, I wonder if there's a, a higher level, um, goal around, um, financial responsibility or financial management that we call out, of which this, developing the financial plan is a tactic of?
Mm-hmm.
And you can pull it back up to resource management, financial management, however we want to state that, that is a stated strategic objective, and the ten-year plan becomes a operating, um, component of that.
Yeah, I just think for clarification, the, the financial plan was, I'm just reading back through this, was relating to the, the infrastructure plan.
Yeah.
So that you, you have an infrastructure plan that says, okay, we have, um, I think it's the next step of the infrastructure plan. I think you identify your roads, your bridges, your buildings, your parks, your trails, and then you try to marry that into a financial plan to where you're going with that. So I don't think it's an independent financial plan. I think it's related to the, the infrastructure plan.
I think just by, and I don't, I don't like wordsmithing by group, but I think just making that green area, just that higher level goal, um, more general, kind of where we want to go. I mean, we have the overall vision or whatever, but what are those specific goals in each of those areas, I think would be really helpful to see, and then I think it would help, um, with the fina, the financial plan and benchmarks, because we're gonna need that for all of those, you know, um, no matter what, but.
Right. Yeah, I mean, they could be as broad as, you know, finances and staffing, um, uh, quality of life, um, uh, business-friendly community, um, you know, that kind of thing. I mean, and, and kind of look at some of this more tactically down underneath, downtown revitalization, communications, you know, that kind of thing.
Okay.
Um, you know, so we could, you know, look at these categories much more broadly.
I will say it's nice to see this on paper, um, just as, as we're picking it apart, but to see it on paper and to have something to go back to when we have decisions coming to us, um, and we have something now to, to kind of bounce it off of, so.
Agreed.
So I, I heard next steps related to the detail at the bottom of the pyramid for council, to the extent that there's specific items council would like to see as part of that work plan, to email that to staff. Um, otherwise, and staff will take that feedback as well as, um, their own work and kind of breaking out that next layer of detail. Um, I think that's also a good opportunity for us to come back and, um, so review that and then also kind of make sure we're comfortable with how those five pillars have been stated, kind of given the feedback that we've just heard. Um, Bruce, do you have, um, so, some guidance for, guidance for us in your experience? So here we are, we've got a five-year, you know, we want to, we've stated five-year term. Um, how would you recommend that we align timeline and plans, and, and how granular are we, um, in setting that level of specificity? And then how do we manage the fluid nature of those timeline and plans and kind of keep each other honest? What's your recommendation?
So if, if you could look at the pyramid, and in the, under develop financial plan with benchmarks and parameters, so the, the blue rectangle, the vertical blue rectangle on the far left side, right? So it says, by the end of fiscal year 2020, develop a ten-year infrastructure improvement and rightsizing staffing plan. What would it look like if the council micromanaged that? And what would it look like if the council didn't pay enough attention to it? Because the real, the real question is, how does a council move ahead effectively? So, I'm not asking you how you've handled it in the past, but in your own mind, what would it look like if the council either micromanaged that initiative, or, or gave it such scant attention that it didn't get done? What's, what's the sweet spot for this council?
So personally, um, as I think about this information, this plan coming back from staff and council reviewing, I think it's helpful to have some rough timelines identified, um, just so, just if nothing else, to start the council's, A, set our expectations, and so we can at least have the conversation, does this seem like a eighteen-month project? Is this a six-month project? And then we can then have the conversation around prioritization and resourcing. I suspect some of these items, you know, park revitalization plan, um, you know, review park dedication policy compared with other cities, those are going to take wildly different timelines.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it'd be helpful for us to be aligned on what those overall, at least the first pass of timeline, again, so we can provide feedback of what's okay to be on the twelve-month plan versus what are we expecting to take three years? Extend walkable activities, that might be on the list for fifteen years, because that's just how long it takes to have infrastructure for walkable activities. But breaking that up, and what are we doing in six months, a year, eighteen months, I think is going to be probably even the more important part of this plan. Just my thought. Feedback?
No, I would agree with that. I think, you know, once we get that section complete, I think then it's really vital to take a look at that timeline side of it.
And if, if the numbers you're getting don't add up, you know, and that Patrick brings you everything and says, well, I, this won't actually be done, I can't have the. you everything and says, "Well, this won't actually be done, I can't have the numbers to you until 2022," then I think you tighten up the screws, right? You almost need sort of a working calendar as to when you can start anticipating. So if I show up here at a meeting a year from now, you should be in different places on each one of these. You know, it's almost like a Gantt chart, where you're gonna see all these initiatives laid out, and on this one, we should be just starting, on this, we should be getting ready to start, this one should be two-thirds done. You should be able to have that level of feedback. Also, remember, too, that these five green items, you know, from the developed financial plan, evaluate funding, those now become your old business. So on your council agenda, that's old business, because you said this was really important. It was important enough for you to ask a lot of people to be involved. So there's a lot of old business for the council, but the most important old business is your strategic plan. So the first thing you hear about under old business is, "Where are we on the initiatives?" Well, this one, we're getting ready to launch, this one's already been launched, this one's coming in for a landing, right? And everything else is old business par the budget, and then we get into that slippery area known as new business. But if the council doesn't do this at each meeting, you're missing a lot of opportunity, and it's gonna go away from you. Because the staff is clearly gonna find other things that can deserve their time and attention. Fires to be put out, no pun intended, chief, but, yeah. There's plenty of work to be done here. So if the council doesn't spend time working on this, if you're way more excited about all the new stuff, and you're given this short shrift, it's gonna die on the vine.
I like the idea of having it on the agenda, and there might be some meetings where there's nothing to report, but it just keeps, it keeps us honest and making sure, so I agree with you.
Good, good. One of the questions, and Patrick, if I can toss this to you, we talked about this a little bit the other day while speaking with the mayor, but how do we get more department head input on this bottom piece, where the real work is gonna be done?
Well, I think, just thinking off the top of my head, is that staff meets on Tuesdays at nine o'clock every week, and the department heads are there, and some of the other staff members are there, and we take that opportunity after we go through our regular business to address at least each one of these, so one a week, or however long that each one takes, until we can put it all together in a format that makes sense and put in a work plan. So that's how I anticipate addressing, reformatting, and making this make more sense to everybody.
Yeah, I think, I'm glad to hear that, because I felt that was one of the deficits in this process at the beginning, is that we weren't somehow securing direct feedback from staff. You know, we were together as a group, but I felt like we needed sort of that individual input, or maybe in a staff meeting, that kind of thing, to be sure that we were capturing kind of their vision for the direction they needed to go. I mean, because while this is old business, it kind of becomes new business when we are aligning new resources with it, right, for that next fiscal year. So I think it's really important that we are sure, even if it's captured in a general category, that it's captured, you know, or that we are hearing about it, so.
Yeah, and obviously, it's a much more comfortable environment at a staff meeting where cameras aren't on, or there's not an audience, and that we can go through it and tell each other what we think is good and what is bad, and what really needs to be, and what doesn't need to be. And so I think that that's actually a lot more productive, at least if you want staff input that way.
I would encourage staff, as this next plan comes through, you know, no holds barred, so tell us what you think, we're looking forward to it. Other, go ahead.
I'm good.
Other points of feedback? I like an end date, and I know that this is a, you know, this is going to be a working document that should be a working document for the next five years, but I think there's also a time where you call, you know, you at least are comfortable printing the first version and getting the first draft out there. Do we have a timeline from, I guess, maybe my question's to Patrick on, I may have a two-way question, and when does staff feel like they can get next round to us, and then what is council's kind of motivation or date when we would like to kind of officially adopt draft one, version one of the strategic plan? Personally, I'd like to have that done by the end of the year, but I also want to make sure that we've got enough detail in this next round, that what we're adopting is actionable. I think we've got a lot that is still concept, and so there's balance.
Well, we can make the end of the year goal, that's, there's no doubt about that. And if we take one a week, that's five weeks, but it may take longer. So we will try to get to the end of the year. It may slip into the first couple of weeks in January, but I think that's an acceptable timeframe.
Feedback to council, does that timeline work?
It works for me.
Yep, works for me.
Works for me, too.
Yeah, I want a good document, not a fast document.
Agree. So. Agree. And I would encourage staff, as you're working through this, if there's items you want to put on a discussion portion of an agenda or workshop, again, let's talk about it. If you're looking for areas of feedback, that would be helpful for council. We'd love to provide, do another working session if needed.
You know, I think it's also real legit for department heads to go up through, Patrick, and say, "Hey, here's an initiative we understand, although we may not understand what you want out of it." Or we may not understand how fast you want to work on it, or how much you want to put to it. So I think there are some clarifiers that'll come forward. Great work session topic for the council. I mean, it's a great discussion piece, and that'll help your people take off, go a little faster in the direction you want it to go.
I have no problem with the end of the year. Wouldn't be bad to get a sneak peek somewhere along the line, just to make sure we're in alignment.
Yep.
Patrick, I just sent you an email, so if we can talk tomorrow or Wednesday and starts to touch base. And there's another question about the vision. I think we can tidy up the middle band and make those things come off the page a little bit more, and then get the right level of detail for the next version for a quick council review, in a pretty short order, I think. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'm good.
Good. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
What's next?
Take care, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other items to come before council this evening? Not hearing any, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we're adjourned.